So this is, this is gonna be a really quick meeting because we're just gathering documents, setting up the structure of this thing. And then, and then we'll have a little bit of hallmark, hopefully not too much for each of us. But because there's some background documents that were used to pull together the policies and bylaws, and we just kind of be familiar with those. So the first thing I will say that is that this is an informal discussion. We're not using Robert's Rules. We don't have a quorum, so we won't be voting on anything. And where paths lead to opinions that are different, like if you think there's another way to go as we're going forward, we'll present both of those options to the board to hear, discuss, and vote. The background on this is in 2017, the first occurrence of the bylaws and policies were posted on the website. That's from the date time stamp on the document. And then there's been updates piecemeal till now, and they're all listed on there. You can see updated by the day. The mission statement itself hasn't been updated since 2022. And one of the big drivers for this is that, you know, there's a lot of changes in the way we're doing it. We've kind of done it a little bit piecemeal since I've joined the board. But one of the big changes is we are no longer associated with the ALA or MLA. And they're heavily referenced in the first eight pages of our policy. So we need to review to see where those things have to be removed and updated. So that's basically it. The purpose of this team is to review and propose revisions of documents to achieve transparency, accountability, and better responsiveness to the patrons' needs of the library. Quick introductions. Of course, everyone probably knows me, but I'm John Garrity, the treasurer. And Diana Brazil is the VP, Vice President. So the next meetings we have will have more staff presence. And Heath Emerson was on just to make sure the meeting was set up. But Tori didn't feel like there was a good administrative staff person to represent. So she just gave us Nicholas and Heath. So that's, that's. Yeah, we can, we can get what we need done for this first meeting without staff. And honestly, the responsibility falls on the board to develop policies and bylaws. Anyway, that's not a staff responsibility, although we will seek their opinion if we're doing something that's counterproductive. So as I, so the only thing, I think I sent this to you, Diana, but there is a Google folder that I've created. You have full admin rights, so does Tori and, and her delegate, if she wants to add them. So I've created in this policy and bylaws subcommittee folder, I've created a resources tab, and it has some really good stuff like this one, the Missouri Public Library Standards. This is from the Secretary of State. It has some really good information about what should be in our bylaws and policies. This one here is talking about, it's, it's, it's basically from the Secretary of State, and it describes what we need to do as a library to be compliant for the funds that they're going to distribute to us. So those are the two big ones. And then in the main folder, I have, of course, the agenda, and then I have the draft policy that we have.
Which, which email did that folder come in? Did the link come in? I can't locate it.
So let me, let me do this. I'll put it in, I'll put it in an email right now to you, and then you can just click on the link.
Okay, okay.
Or maybe I can put it in the, in the chat. Let me see.
If you send me an email, that'd be better, because then I can go back and find it later.
Yeah, I'll send it to you as an email.
I remember seeing an email where you sent it, and I'm trying to, I've got my email pulled up, but I can't, I can't seem to find the right email that it's in. Oh, wait, I just found it.
Okay, got it?
Yeah, okay, it says it, there's three resources, agenda, and draft. Is that the right one?
Yeah, this, the draft is the one we're going to be working off of.
Okay. Do we have, or have you done, have you gone and looked to see if there's any? Is there another set of bylaws that somebody else has that we might use as a template?
So there are earlier versions, but I, I don't have them electronic. If I can get them, I'll drop them in the resources folder, and then you can look at them. Because the.
I think Echo had some of those, because I remember she sent me PDFs of them.
Yeah, I need to get that from her, and then we'll drop it in the resources folder if you want to reference. Because, yeah, a lot of these, like, everything from like page five to page eight is stuff we're going to want to look at. I mean, we don't.
And I see you've done some kind of, some potential revisions here already.
Right, so I, so what I've done is I've gone through and kind of went, these are the ones we really have to look at, because we're not associating ourselves with the ALA anymore. The other big one, and I know a lot of organizations spend a bit of time on mission statement. I don't think we need to spend really very much time on that at all. I think we should kick that up to the board. But I, but as I was looking at it, Building Communities for All Through Access, Innovation, Engagement, I thought we could probably add more specificity, because it, because really, this is kind of what I was looking at. Our mission is to enrich the community by providing free access to knowledge, fostering lifelong learning, and creating a welcoming space for discovery, connection, and growth. It sounds more like a library. The other one is good, but it doesn't really say what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I've never, I've never really been in an organization that had a mission statement. It's kind of just aspirational and doesn't really bind, not really binding on anything.
It, you're, they're usually so vague that they're not measurable in terms of success or failure. But the Secretary of State says we're required to have a mission or vision statement. So we got it, we have to do.
This is kind of like, this is, this, I'll tell you what this reminds me of. If you're a single member LLC, you have to have an operating agreement. And I remember when I found that out, I thought, why, why do I need to have an operating agreement to govern disputes with myself? And they said, well, you just got to have one.
Right.
So I think it's kind of like what this is.
Yeah, for that, I've noticed, I think for the LLCs, they're looking to see if your mission statement is within scope for what you're trying to license yourself to do.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's like standard language that you put in, or that's when you set up the LLC. But that's, that's, that's not really relevant here.
Right, so I think if you're okay with this, or if you have suggestions for removal or edit on this, this is just a generic library mission statement.
No, I think, I think what you proposed is that, that looks fine to me.
Okay, and if the board wants to change it, you know, Mary Echo or Janice want to change it, you know, word, I mean, because you can, we can go hours talking about this kind of stuff. And I, I think that's just, I think it's an improvement, but let's, we'll, we'll kick it forward to the big team. This, so these are struck out because these are specifically ALA language.
Oh, and the Library Bill of Rights?
Yeah, it's the freedom to read statements. And if, basically, it encourages all material of any type of content to include minors, even things that are not age appropriate. So as we disassociate it from them, I think it's important that we remove that language. So, but if there's something in here, I didn't, it's, it's often easier for me just to, to whole cloth, remove it, because it's right out of their playbook. And it's hyperlinked, you can get it right from them. I don't think it's ever a good idea to, when you're an organization, to make your foundational documents hyperlink to another non-governmental organization, because they could change, and then you'd have to update your hyperlinks. And, you know, you'd basically break your own stuff, so.
Well, they, basically, every time they change, you change, and you don't even know it.
Right.
That's, that's actually one of the things that I've had with, you know, when we're making reference to Robert's Rules of Order, you know, we just have a hyperlink to that, and every time that changes and our rules change, and we're not aware of the change. And I think, one of the things I think we might ought to do is, is just say, we're going to use Robert's Rules of Order edition, you know, whatever edition, copyright, whatever year, and just pick one and say, this is the one we're going to use, and not, not make ours subject to change by a third party.
Yeah, I agree. They, they do change. I think they're up to 13 now, most, most orgs are using 11. I think I have 11 or 12. They're, they're pretty additive, though. They don't, they don't really change the foundational stuff, they just add stuff, so.
No, but I think if there's, if there's going to be something added, we ought to be approving each edition.
Yep.
And that's just so, so the reason I say that is just so everybody knows what the rules are at all times.
Yep.
And it doesn't, and it doesn't, I just, I don't like the idea of some third party changing the rules of our organization.
I think the only way, and that does get into the bylaws, there is a mention in the bylaws that we adhere to Robert's Rules of Order. It doesn't say what version, I don't believe, but, but you're right. We, I mean, the only way to get around that is say, we're adhering to version 11 or something.
Robert's Rules of Order, version 11, and, and I would say, as long as you can still find version 11 online, and it's not changing, it's like an art, well, either that or we just get a PDF of it and attach it. That'd probably be better.
Yep, we can do that. Let me make a note of that.
And then everybody knows what the rules, you know, just everybody, everybody knows what the rules are and you can look them up.
I'm going to say, so Robert's Rules version needs to be.
We just need to, we need to pick one and stick with it. And I, I don't have any particular preference as to what version, just as long as we pick one.
Yeah, well, I think, I'm looking for, for our board president to pick one, because most of us have, I think, version 11 or 12. But let's, let's pick, we'll pick one and attach.
Pick one and stick with it.
Okay, and that goes in our bylaws for our bylaws.
Yeah, just as, as like as an appendix, maybe.
Yep, yeah, we might even be able to hyperlink it. I, I think there's a website, so I'm afraid to hyperlink, because, you know, those links break, but.
Yes, well, yeah, they can, and again, the content haven't changed. That's, that's why I say, just have a, have a, just have a PDF of what the rules are, and then anybody, and actually, then the public can look at that, too. And then they can, you know, if they think we're not following it, they can say on page 45 of, of the version of Robert's Rules of Order, you know, we think you're not doing this right.
Yep, okay, so I'll reference that we want to get a PDF version and then have it, and then have it, so that's a lot safer. If you bring it down onto your storage server, and you hyperlink to a PDF version that you have, then you're, you're pretty much safe from that. Have it downloaded, downloaded with a link. Okay, now we get into, so that, that was all that stuff. I think the rest of this stuff is, is getting into, and I've got some thoughts on, on this stuff, but I think we can do this collaboratively. The material selection policy, a lot of, this is again, ALA stuff.
What page is that on?
This is on page seven.
Okay, I scrolled down a ways and lost my spot.
So, so what I did, because we're not going to be able to get all this, I just kind of want to go through this at a high level. I identified the ones that I absolutely know we're going to have to make changes to in color. The ones that I don't think we're going to have to do anything with, I left them alone as white. And like, you know, our operating hours, what, what is the fine for returning a book late? I mean, those things are going to probably have to be, stay the way they are, at least for now. And then, and that would be, we need some staff thoughts on those things. I wouldn't change, I don't see a need to change them. But these are definitely, some of them have legal impact, like they're, they're doing a lot of, you know, talking about discrimination and stuff, which we're definitely on board with not discriminating. So this is where I appreciate your point of view from a lawyer's standpoint. This one here, so how we decide what to buy. I think there's a collection, in fact, I have to go farther down. They're mentioning it in more than one space, that there's a collection policy, and we have a, and we have a director, it looks like these two folks are the ones that are determining the collection, the Director of Collection Services and Director of Youth Services.
Well, so there's a committee, oh, yeah, Collection Services and Youth Services Department, gotcha.
Right, so I want to think about that, how we do that. We should be reviewing the materials carefully to make sure that we're compliant with the Secretary of State and, and child protection laws. So I mean, like, for example, we shouldn't be buying books that are meant to be sold to children that have material that's harmful to children.
Right.
And that's the Collection Services are supposed to review the books for that. So I think we need to have some language in there, and I know Robert is working on that. So I want to hear his feedback as well. So this is definitely needs to be under review.
Yeah.
How things are placed in the library. I would love to see us get back to Dewey Decimal System or Library Congress or something that's more predictable, instead of random.
I thought we did Dewey Decimal System, but, well, it's Dewey Decimal System, but it's within like the youth section or the adult section or the graphic novel section or whatever. Is that kind of how we do it?
Yeah, from what I, from what I've heard from them and seen, they're using Dewey Decimal in some places, and then in other places, they don't. They're using, nope. So that probably could be standardized, so that people can find things more predictably. But, you know, again, this is where I'd want staff input. I'd like to know, you know, how, you know, how do they, do we need to follow Dewey and not?
Yeah, we need to have somebody give us, brief us on, on what they do, because I think, so we understand, so we understand it better before we try to change it.
Absolutely, I mean, because there, you know, there's things like displays, and, you know, displays are great, but we need to know, you know, is, is a display going to be an entire bookshelf for the bunch of books that are pulled out of the regular places? And, you know, I, I want to hear from staff. So when are we following? Can you see my notes here?
I can see some of them, the ones that you're putting in, I can see what you highlight. And I don't see any, if you're changing anything on this, how items are placed in the library, I don't, I don't see that.
Okay, what about now? I just shared the tab.
On the screen, maybe, maybe that doesn't appear until you, like, hit, until you, until you hit enter.
Oh, yeah, let me try that. What are we following?
We're only. I'm supposed to be the secretary for this, so what am I supposed to be taking down?
I don't know, I guess, this is a subcommittee, so we're kind of, we're kind of trailblazing here. If you, if you want, you can come into the document and maybe help me put some of these notes in the places where we're putting them. So what I'm saying under how items are placed, I'm saying, what are we following for a system?
Let's see.
Replacement.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, I can, wait a minute. I've never used Google Docs before, so.
So you can, you can see my comment now, right?
Oh, I see this, okay, I can do a comment, okay.
Okay, so I think that's a, that's a good way to kind of just go through here. And then when we have Tori or somebody, let's let her explain, because that should be in here. I'd love to see that, you know, what, what are we doing? It looks like they're doing age, so you got 12 to 17, and.
Oh, yeah.
And seven to 12. And then anybody, what's the age of majority? Is it 17 or 18?
Age of majority generally is 18, but then there's, of course, there's different ages for different things. I think the age of consent, I think, is, it's either 16 or 17.
Yeah, so that, maybe that's a legal review question, age of consent. Let me do that.
And I'm assuming the, the, it says, "teens containing materials recommended for, you know, age 12 to 17." I'm assuming, who does the recommendation? Is that the publishers that we're selling?
From what I understand, it's the publisher decides, tells you the genre and the recommended age. And I'm hearing that they, they sometimes make mistakes. So I'm not sure we can trust publishers. It's, I think, rule of thumb is the person who's selling you something is not the best person to ask the same question about, you know what I mean? It's better to get a.
They're going to recommend it for whomever they want to buy it.
Right.
Let's see here.
So who can have a say, including donations for the community, we're encouraged, what are the, even serious consideration? All materials added to collection by gift, suggestion or gift must meet the same criteria. So that's, that's really what it is. Should be age appropriate, and, and they should be compliant with the law.
The age of consent is actually, I just looked this up on my phone, the age of consent in Missouri, there's actually like a little two-page handout about that from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services.
What do they say?
Okay, I'll, I'll just read you the, the highlights. 13 years, and this is the age of consent to have sex, 13 years and younger cannot consent to sex with anyone. 14, 15, and 16-year-olds cannot consent to sex with someone who is more than four years older or who is 20, okay, this doesn't make sense. 14, 15, and 16-year-olds cannot consent to sex with someone who is more than four years older or who is 21 and older. That's kind of redundant. 17-year-olds can consent to sex with anyone 14 years old or older.
Is there any guidance on exposure to, like?
Not on this, not on this handout.
All right, I'm just going to put 17 with a question mark.
But it makes, but it makes reference to, it makes reference to a statute, it's section 566.034, and then also 566.067. And then it's got, oh, wow, it's got, this is actually, hold on.
Can, can you add that as a comment on that section? And then we'll have that through.
What I'm going to do is download this, I'm going to download this handout and add it to the folder.
Okay.
I'm just going to put, okay, let me. Maybe get me through this column, I'm trying to figure out the best way to do this. Okay, and then if I want to comment, okay. I'm just going to put age of consent is complex. See, and, from, mode, Department of Health and Senior Services.
I think this is important, because later on, they talk about parental, you know, parental consent. And that'll, that'll tie into that one.
I'm going to say that we'll be, actually, signing various statutes. Add it to. That said, I don't know how to spell subcommittee, two N's, okay. Okay, and then I'm going to get this, I got this handout on my phone, but I'm going to get it. Very minor consent laws, okay, I'm going to download this, and then I'll add it to the folder. Okay, when I'm in the folder, how do I?
How do you add something to the folder?
Yeah, how do I add something to it?
Just go up here to the new, can you see my screen?
Hold on, let me get back to that screen, okay.
Let me share this tab instead, hold, hold on, can, so you should be able to see my screen now.
See it now.
Yeah, there's a new button right here.
Oh, okay.
And then you click File Upload, and then you just navigate to it.
Okay, New File Upload, okay, I got it. Very minor consent laws, and then is it going to ask me what I want to, what folder I want to add it to?
And no, it should, it should add it to whatever.
Do you see it?
Whatever, yeah, if you're in the policy and bylaw, it'll bring it in there.
Yeah, okay, so you can move it to the folder if you want to.
Yeah, we'll put it in Resources.
Okay.
Trying to keep this one as clean as I can.
Okay.
Okay, so that gets us to, I don't think there's too much, I mean, it would be nice to take a look at this one, but I, the big one is the youth and the library. This, so this is kind of more ALA stuff. The library makes a broad selection of materials and information available for everyone, including children and teenagers. But there's really no mention of being compliant with the law or, or protecting children from inappropriate material. So that needs to get looked at.
Is it still, or how items are placed in the library?
Yeah, I don't know, see, the library meets, therefore, the library selects, through the, a broad range of viewpoints. This is just, this is really like the freedom to read stuff all over again, it doesn't.
Yeah, where, where are you at on this?
So down here, the library meets diverse needs of the community, therefore selects materials that provide a broad range of viewpoints and subject matter. The library cannot overrule the rights and responsibilities of individuals deciding who, who does and doesn't have access to library materials.
And you notice that was just updated in June 23.
Yeah, so that's in conflict with what the Secretary of State says. He, he basically says, the children. Yeah, so that's in conflict with what the Secretary of State says. He, he basically says the children's books should be suitable for children, and that's not what it says here. It says the parents or guardians are responsible. So I, I think we need to reword this one. I'm just gonna do a strikeout for now.
And then come up with something else. Well, and that's one that I think it'd be useful to go back to the past bylaws and just, that was just added in 2023, so my question would be, what did it replace, if anything?
Yeah, June of 2023 is when it was updated, so.
Before Echo and I came onto the board.
Yep.
And that was right before the, or that was right around the time the county commissioners took over the appointments.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to just find out. So I'm not, I don't think anybody's saying parents aren't responsible. In fact, I think we're saying the office of parents are responsible, but the library should be helping parents by putting books that are appropriate for, you know, minor children.
Right.
So that parents can, can get to the books that they want to put their kids in front of. That doesn't quite capture that, so we gotta work on that language with Robert. We're, you know, we're not saying that people can't have the books they want. We're saying they shouldn't be in front of a child without some parental help here, so that's the problem.
Yeah, without some, without some guidance and protection.
Yes, something like that, and we'll have to figure out from the lawyer, how, how do we come as close as we can to, to getting that language? The censorship policy is, is kind of silly because we don't censor. If you look up the definition of censor, it means that we'd be going into books and redacting words, ripping out pages. We don't do that, and nobody does that.
Well, I think, I think censorship, a lot of times, what the definition of it is depends on who you ask. And some folks have a much broader definition of it than, than I think what it is.
I agree. It's like, it's kind of like what they're doing with book banning, you know, if, if we if we put a book over and a display, that's not banning the book.
No.
But in any case, you know, everybody wants to redefine the language. I just, I mean, I looked it up and it's the suppression or prohibition of any part of, but that's not, we probably need a legal definition of censorship.
Yeah, there probably, there probably is one. That might be something I think, let me do something right quick. I'm going West Law. I have a feeling when I, I try to go on and find this, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna, oh, I'm gonna find a mountain of of, uh, I'm gonna find a mountain of, of case law. See. Just wanna see what the Supreme Court says it is.
So this is, it looks like they're going, they're going right to First Amendment when they're talking about censorship, so. That's what I'm getting.
Okay, I just searched, I'm searching on West Law. And my search is basically censorship in the same sentence as definition. And this is a Supreme, first hit on this. My internet's running a little slow, taking a bit.
Broader.
This case doesn't define. Okay, I'm getting a bunch of cases that say that have censorship and definition in the same sentence, but they're not the definition of censorship.
Right. Well, that's kind of what we need, and the broadest sense refers to suppression of information artistic. So I'm just gonna put those notes in there for that.
Yeah.
So we have something.
There's a Law Review article from 1961, but I don't think it's in my plan, though. And here's a Law Review article on Law Review article in the University of Chicago Law Review from 2012, which I think looks like it's right on point, but again, I think it's what happens when I click on this. I think it's gonna tell me it's out of plan. Um, well? No? Huh?
I'm just wondering, so what why do we need a censorship policy if we're not gonna censor? Is that, maybe that's why we need one?
Well, I think we need to know what censorship is, so, so we can say this is, you know, so we can say that we're not doing what the definition of censorship is.
Right.
This Law Review article is by a guy named Derek Van Bower. I'm gonna find where it says who he is. Okay, this guy is a law professor in Arizona. I'm gonna email this.
Maybe that's what we need to do is, because everybody knows about the First Amendment. But I don't think a lot of people know about the exceptions to free speech, and there are exceptions. Certain types of speech such as obscenity, incitement to violence are not protected.
Right.
So I mean, if you have a book that's just, I, I remember growing up, there was a book called The Anarchist Cookbook. Yeah, and they took it off the shelves because it, it was kind of like MacGyver teaching people how to make, you know, dangerous things, and so they took it out. But, you know, that certainly, you know, that, it just needs to be reviewed, that's all. I mean, so we just, we just need to say what, what the, what the exceptions would be to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a Robert thing again, I don't know.
I think it might be, it might be, that's, that's, I don't think I'd wanna try to wade into it because that's not my, you know, I can read some law on it, but I'm not an expert in that area of law, and and I think you probably have to have some specialization to to, to really, to really get a good grasp of it.
I know he's working on it. We're kind of doing this premature. So anyway, because he's supposed to, he's supposed to get something out to us for that. I don't know if he's gonna address that specifically in that paragraph. It might be that that goes away and we just get a standalone for collections and, you know.
Well, and then, yeah, and.
Looks at non-printables. Okay, I just wanted to go through here high level, and this is another one, the Board of Trustees can only, policy on confidential library records. I just took this out because it's, it's ALA. But we're going to, I think we'll just reference the statute. I'll take this, take the strikeout.
Where are you at now? What page?
Uh, we're on page 11.
Okay.
And
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's strict controls and we've kind of, we've touched on this in meetings about what is a library record, what can be sunshine, what is private? And I think it's probably good to leave this the way it is. I just don't, I just don't have.
The reference to the statute?
Yeah, the statute, but then we can get rid of the ALA reference, because it's probably just an expounding of that anyway, but we can take a look at that.
Uh, well, the ALA probably is some general thing, because the laws of every state are different. So I would rather, I'd be more comfortable just referencing whatever the statute says. And I wonder if it has been, I wonder if those statutes, it says 2014. I wonder if those statutes have changed since 2014. They probably haven't.
I got, this, this part here was updated in 2019. The third party. I, I wonder, I think that, that updated date applies to the whole thing.
The 182, 815 and 817?
Yeah, that's June 2019. So, and this, this pretty closely matches what the Secretary of State has is for for confidentiality. So there's probably not a whole lot of wiggle, I mean, this, this is probably is what it has to be.
So 815 was effective out, okay. 815 and 817 were both revised in 2014.
Okay. Well, the other, you know, the other thing, and this is, you know, we, we had talked about this, that some, and I'm gonna have to look at data retention policies, but we shouldn't, as a library, we shouldn't be collecting any data that we don't really need. You know what I mean?
Yeah, because if you, if
Because it's just, we're, we're
Yeah, if you, if you collect it, then you have liability for it if it, if something happens to it.
Right, and so that should be in here, kind of like data security stuff. I'll, I'll pull some things out from my corporate experience that, that will protect us, they'll reduce our liability. So it should be data retention. We'll retain those things we're supposed to. We won't release them to anybody. We shouldn't. I mean, that's kind of what this whole thing says. And we don't share them with third, so this is the problem. Some of our data, we're sharing with third parties, like, like if you, if you have interactions with Mobius or Sierra. Those companies have our data because it's in the cloud, so that's, it could be a problem. I mean, if they're not being vigilant, that could be a problem, so that, that's something we should address here. I'll, I'll put some notes in here and then we'll kind of beef this up.
Okay.
Uh, if we're gonna, if we're gonna offshore our, our data responsibilities, then we should say that, that we carefully select third parties so they're complying with law or whatever.
That's a good point.
So that's, that's all the data protection. This stuff facilities hours of operations. I, I don't, haven't heard anybody complaining that we're not open enough, but I, you know, we'll have to check with Tori on that.
Well, the library's actually open more these days than it was when I was a kid, because I think it was, I want to say it was closed at five, you know, years ago.
Yeah.
And on Saturday, I know it was open on Saturday, but I know it wasn't open until six. I think it might have just been, I don't know, it's been so long, it's been so long since I've been a kid, I don't remember what the hours were, but I think they closed somewhat early on Saturday. So I, I know, I, I think the hours are.
Well, I, one of the things I was saying, Diana, was that we should use data-driven metrics and others. We should see how many people are actually coming in at those times to see if it makes sense.
Well, that's true, because if we get staff there, we're paying them and there's not any traffic, then, then it, yeah, then why should we, why should we have them there?
I don't know, and it's probably different for every branch, so we'll have to get some data to, I, I think we leave this alone until we know more, because
Yeah, I would agree.
The library's holiday schedule, I think the library holiday schedule is pretty much government, you know, like the same days the courthouses are open and closed, so.
Yeah, the only thing is that Staff Training Day is on Columbus Day. But yeah, it looks like everything else is, you know, and we're not taking off on Truman Day, which is a Missouri state holiday, it's, I forget, it's, Truman Day is sometime in April or May, I forget exactly when it is.
Yeah.
But everything else is just, yeah, it's just national holidays.
If this holiday falls on a Sunday, food and drink policy, I don't. I think there's probably not much room for improvement there.
Mm-mm. No, I think it's.
Smoking, obviously, they can't have people smoking in there. They're outlawing the guidelines. Weapons. So the, the law is really kind of ambiguous on this one.
Yeah.
That libraries are not specifically called out for concealed carry, but but do you, do you see some, libraries are making policy that say you can't have any weapons? So I, I think, probably have to take that under consideration.
Yeah. I don't know how you really enforce that. I, 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 I don't have a strong opinion on it one way or the other. I don't, I don't have a problem with people who conceal or carry.
I think what they do, what I, what I've seen some libraries do is they say no, no weapons that are not, no, what does it say? Something like, it's, it's worded very craftily, no illegal weapons are allowed in the library or something like that. So they say it to where they're, they're referencing a law that nobody really knows, so, you know, I, but 571 is, is the, the, I think that's the one that does list where you can and cannot have a weapon. I don't have strong feelings about that one either way.
I don't, I don't either.
Display and distributing non-library materials. This could be a problem because, you know, people could come in and just start dumping stuff on the countertops and stuff and you wouldn't know if it doesn't even belong in there. I think this is covered pretty well.
571 is basically the criminal code, so. It talks about, oh, it talks about weapons offenses. Oh, okay.
So petitioning.
Then it talks about concealed carry permits.
A work. Yeah, or constitutional carry, so you don't, you don't need a permit to carry. Unless you're in Kansas City, then you do, if you want to open carry. I'm not gonna even touch that one. I, I, I think we leave it alone and we could probably ask Sheriff Cole what, what his thoughts are, but it's probably a bad idea for people open carrying in the library. It's just gonna scare.
Just gonna, that's just gonna stir up trouble. Well, actually, 571, the, the reference of this is paragraph 30, section 8. Oh, let me go back. Okay, 531. Actually, okay, what I think we ought to do is, we're gonna, the way this is cited is not, not correct. And then the link is just, let's see where the link goes. Openly. Okay, it takes you to 571, so it takes you to the right section. So it takes you to the right place, but citation's not, the way it's cited isn't correct.
Let me do a word search. Yeah, it, it doesn't list libraries. Yeah, I think this is gonna be a homework item. I'll, I'll take it. I'm kind of interested in this. Because now, we, you know, we have a law enforcement officer who's obviously caring, so that's, you know, there's some people that are exempt.
531. 531030 is the unlawful use of a weapon statute. And it says, "A person commits the offense of unlawful use of weapons except otherwise provided by sections 571, 101 to 571, 121. If he or she knowingly carries a firearm or any other weapon readily capable carries a firearm or any other weapon readily capable of lethal use into any church or place where people have a central for worship or into any election precinct on election day or into any building owned or occupied by any agency of the federal government, state government, or political subdivision thereof. So I guess it's basically, it's a, it's a county building, so you can't carry a weapon into it. So that's, that's basically complying with, that's just complying with state law. So I think, I think the, I think the statute to, I think the legislator, I think the legislature made that decision for us.
Yep. All right, I'm trying to get down here. Uh, petitioning, I mean, this stuff, electioneering, petitioning, all that stuff is, you know, it's, it's all good.
As a precinct for elections? I don't think it does, does it?
Um, we do. They had, um, is, uh, they had the library as a voting place, so electioneering.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, you'd have to be in that precinct, but they did have it. So maybe this is an opportunity to add electioneering to, I mean, because.
I think the electioneering is probably, that, that I think is going to be governed by statutes as well.
It is. I, I just, you know, people go there to study and do research. I don't think they want to be.
Oh, petitioners, kind of. You know, I've had people approach me outside the library asking me to sign a petition.
Uh, signatures outside the library must first.
I think, yeah, and whoever asked, I don't even know what the petition was for, but it was somebody and they were outside, they were outside the front door.
Well, the way, the way they do it with electioneering is they don't let you, you have to be, I want to say 20 yards or something from the front door. So you can't, you can't obstruct the door, right? You gotta be away from the door. So maybe something could be added in here like that to where people aren't, you can, in other words, you can't get by the guy to get in the building.
Yeah, I think, I have a feeling that's probably governed by statute. So I think it's probably all we need to do is reference whatever the applicable statute is.
Well, the, the other issue is, I mean, it's public property, so you can't tell people they can't, they can't be there. However, they can't be, they can't be harassing either. So, you know, there is, I think, language in here that says that.
Okay, here we go. There's a.
Libraries Code of Conduct. So it's.
Oh, it's, there's, there's, there's a statute on this. Okay, this is, this is an election of chance. This is 115.697. Um, cannot um, exit polling, surveying, sampling, electioneering, distributing election literature, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, on election day inside the building with the polling places located or within 25 feet of the building's outer door polling place. So that's, that's where the 25-foot radius comes from.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be bad to say that if, because it looks like petitioning inside the question is prohibited, but they might, they may gather signatures outside the library if they first sign in.
Yeah.
And we could ask them to, you know, keep the doorway clear.
Well, 25 feet from the door.
Yeah, I'll just make a note because that might, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
I mean, if you've ever been trying to get into a store and, you know, people have tables and they're selling stuff out front, if you can't get into the door, it's not.
Yeah, I've got, I haven't run into problems with it in a long time, but, but I was just at Walmart a couple of weeks ago and the Girl Scouts were out there selling cookies, but they were, they were pretty unobtrusive.
I'm just gonna say, should we add a 25-foot um, door?
25-foot radius restriction?
To the, yeah, for petitioners.
Yeah. Either that or just leave it the way it is.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess. I don't think it's terrible the way, I mean, it's fine. There's already, there's already a code of conduct and I just clicked on that. And it, it, it talks about if you're harassing people, like, you know, if they don't let you buy without signing the petition, then that's harassment, I think, so. So. Here's the code of conduct. This is what we were talking about. Uh, let me share that.
And, uh, it's a little hyperlink on the code of conduct, then, oh, because it's right there below. I guess that's why the link won't work.
So this is, this is that one that I think people were asking at what point is someone's behavior so disruptive that they can be asked to leave? And, you know, I guess the staff has discretion on how disruptive the person's being. It's just kind of vague. I, I don't know. I, I mean, if obviously they're screaming and yelling, that's disruptive. How can I make this thing? I, I don't think there's much to, to be done with that.
No, I don't think so. It seems pretty.
The dress code and hygiene standards, I mean, that's.
That seems appropriate.
I asked if, yeah, we do have some people that are, um, needs some coaching on hygiene, but um, I think we'll leave that to people's discretion if they're being disruptive with it. Uh, personal belongings. I, I don't see much here. There is one thing where they say, um, they reserve the right to search bags. I think if the person's not there, um, it's a lost and found item, so.
Where's it said that?
Right. I didn't, I didn't highlight any of that. EOC stuff, I, I'm not gonna, that's not my bailiwick. I'm leaving that alone. And I know there was some harassment of the front desk people. I was, at least I was told that, but this should be strong enough that they can get the police involved if they need to. Um, and this is, so some of this is workplace related. I'm not gonna touch that. That's employment law. Reporting discrimination, harassment, that's all it needs. It all needs to be in there.
Yep.
Um, policy against workplace violence, obviously, and it needs to be all in there. This is pretty good. This is a good policy.
Oh, the technology?
Yeah, I'll go over it again and see if anything's missing, but it's, it's, it's pretty good. I mean, I, I would love to see, you know, some of the ports disabled and stuff, but Heath left the call, so I'll have to talk to him separately on how he's securing the computers from, you know, being tampered with or whatever. Internet access. We already have filters, um, but I don't know.
Oh, okay. We do have viewers on here. I didn't realize that. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, public computers and printers, free day passes. This is all just stuff that needs to be there. That book of trainer thing was added. Um, social media policy. Content is not an endorsement. Yeah, I don't know if those disclaimers have to be on the website too, that, you know, if we're saying this is a good book and it's not a good book, you know.
Um, it says, are you still on the social media policy?
Yeah, the posted content is not an endorsement.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, this is a tough one, the staff use of social media. So I, I think most places have, you can, you know, th- this is where we have to protect the integrity of the library, but we also should be considering people's free speech, so.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
So I'm, I'm gonna flag this one for Albert's review. Or can you do that? Because I, I'm stuck in here on screen share. I can't.
Staff use of social media.
Yeah, staff use of social media on page 23.
Okay.
Now, we just, we need a legal review such that, um, we can, that we can protect free speech, but not drag the library into personal endorsements. It's the same thing when the library says this is a good book. It doesn't, I mean, if the library puts a book out on their site, it doesn't mean we're saying everything's good. We're just saying the book is available or something.
But, uh, I just put flag for revealed by cancel.
Right, there you go. Social media, code of conduct. Yeah, that's, that's gotta be there. We actually have the ability to moderate because a lot of people just don't have the time to do that. Patron privacy and social media. Yeah, this is a tough one too, um, because if you're using a library computer, it's going through a filter, it is being monitored, so there should be no expectation of privacy.
Are you looking at patron privacy on social media?
Right. So if you're, yeah, if you're using a library computer on social media and you forget to log out or something, I don't. That's a no-brainer. Unattended children policy. I think that's gotta be there.
Yeah.
This is pretty, pretty much gotta be the way it is. So there's, so this one, I, I wish we could do something more. We're gonna have to, because it, you have, you either don't have access or you have all access. I wish there was a more, you know, like there's a child library card.
Oh, there, there is. There's the one where the, we, I can't remember if this was before, was this before your time or after? When we could have the.
Check this out, so.
Access for the whole card on your. That's all it's. Yeah, so I, it's not really.
It's, it's really an all or none. They're not, they're basically saying you either have all access or you don't have access.
Okay, there's a youth all access library.
See, that means.
I thought, again, I, I don't remember the exact policy, but we adopted it some months ago. And it was, it was where the parents could put some restrictions on that.
I'm not seeing it here in the policy.
Something may not be in the policy, but it's on the website.
It's, it's saying patrons 17 years old or younger will be issued a youth all access apparent. So I don't know what the difference is. So that's probably, we need a question to.
Within the minutes of, of, it's probably maybe a year, some months or a year ago. I don't know. I, I don't remember exactly when it was. It's been since I've been on the.
It, it does say, so the adult all access has a photo ID. Oh, you have to provide a photo ID. So that's probably how they're ascertaining you're older than 17.
Could not be in the policy, but I think it's, it's, hold on. Let's see if I can find it on the library website.
Yeah, I think, and then there's digital library cards, which I, if you have the all access adult viewer, I think you're already enrolled. Now you do have to, like for Hoopla, you have to sign up because I just, I checked that out the other day. So I think this is a question to Tori. Is, is content going to be limited in any way for the youth all access library card versus the adult all access library card? I don't know how that, I don't know how they even manage that. So that's a question. Can you tag that for, um, question to Tori on youth versus adult all access card? How's the content? Or is, if the content is restricted or not? Because it says all access. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I will do that.
Okay. Checking it out.
Okay.
Oles. Peas and pines. Wow, that's so cheap. $10 a day. Of course it adds up, I'm sure.
$10 a day for what?
$10 a day for late, late charges.
Oh, 10 cents?
That's, I got that on page 26. Top of the page. Interlibrary loan, materials are not available from the personnel. This is pretty generic. Right now we have interlibrary loan. We don't, Mobius isn't, it's not working yet as far as I know. So and this doesn't mention the specific service, so this probably can just stay the way it is. Outreach delivery policy. I think that's, that's fine. Health, safety and pest, pest policy. This one is pretty common sense too.
Found, I found the thing about library cards that I was looking for. There is a policy, um, Alexa, the link tells you, um, takes you to, right to the policy name we've been looking at, but it says, adding permissions to library cards. Minors are required to have a guardian assume responsibility for the selection and cares, care of library materials, including charges for damage or loss of borrowed items. Limits can be placed on a minor's account to ensure that a guardian must be present to check out books and other materials by visiting any library service desk. I knew we'd adopted that, but I just couldn't remember one.
Okay.
And you know what we might want to do going back to that? I realize you kind of got ahead, you kind of went on, but, um, it might be worthwhile to have something in there that, that spells out the policy regarding, um, permission. the policy regarding, um, permissions.
Yeah, I agree. Just, so because, I mean, if they.
Cause I kind of, I had to hunt through that to find it.
Yeah, uh, that would be, why don't we, why don't we just ask Tori if she can put a definition of what the, what the differences are.
Okay.
The digital, um, card, the all, you know, all digital accesses is gonna need that too. I mean, you can have a digital access and, but you can't take out any physical media. So, it's, um, that, but that kind of is in there.
Okay. I just, I just added that to my comment.
Yep.
John, where are you on that? Where are you now?
So I am down with health, safety and pest policy. I think that's pretty common sense. I don't think we can, I, I wouldn't change a thing there talking about.
What page is that?
It's on, uh, page 27.
Okay.
She's just talking about the materials being returned with, you know.
Okay, I see.
With biohazard on them.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I don't, I wouldn't change anything on that.
Uh, let's see, services, meeting rooms and study rooms. You shouldn't count the library meeting and study rooms for. This stuff's fine. This, this is pretty much what they have to do. Sales charges and fees fundraising. That has to be that way too.
Right.
Required conduct, legal responsibilities activity. Like we're fine there. I wish they had, and we're probably down the road, but I wish they had an electronic booking. You know, where you could reserve a room or see that rooms are, they're not available.
Yeah, that, that would be nice. I wonder what it would cost to add that service.
No, 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 they might already have it on Sierra's, maybe just a module that we have to turn on or program in. I don't know. I, I, that's a question to Heath, I guess.
Okay.
From Tori. Because they track about everything else. Why wouldn't you want to track that? I mean, they're tracking it now, but it's manual. You have, you have to go up to the desk and tell them. Fax policy, I think that's fine. Photo, photocopy, prices are available, circulation desk. This is generic enough. You don't have to do anything with it. Exam proctoring, that's nice. Staff research. Nice service. Library should cooperate with other agencies in a better way to serve the public, providing broader access to the library materials. I don't think there's anything that has to change on that. On the community engagement to volunteer. I don't know how, it'd be interesting to hear how many people volunteer for the library. But.
Yeah, that would be interesting to know.
So I'm not gonna do anything with that. Governance accountability standard, open meeting standards. So this is, this is good. I, I think this is what we've been talking about is having these, you know, open meeting discussions. You almost have to do them as a sideline like this because our, our open ma- regular meetings would go three, four hours if we tried to do this, you know, kind of stuff then.
Oh yeah, the marathon session.
Yeah. So this is all per statute. It's not gonna change. The only other thing is like, we ran into a problem when Tori went on vacation. There was, there was literally no backup to post like a meeting. So I think there should be, I don't know, this will probably go in the handbook, but there should be out of office with a backup notification and for the executive director. Um, we kind of found out as a by the way, as we were leaving another meeting that she was going on vacation and we knew, but we just, you know, there was no way to, to be prepared for that. So I guess spring bake, everybody goes, everybody leaves. I'm like.
Yeah.
So we're gonna prefer the delay of, I should have a record, public comments. So we updated this at the beginning of each. So this has already been updated by us.
Yeah, to get to a lot more time.
Yep. Procurement policy, this one probably needs another look at Christian, one which has been procurement policy in order to. Yeah, we already have these guidelines and we haven't changed them. I think the only thing that I would probably do is take a look at the credit card purchases because obviously we don't want people running around making two, $3,000 credit card purchases. But I, you know, I won't note, when Mary gets back, I'll start, um, I'll get the, the two Marys together. And we'll figure out how to, cause I think there are, um, budget or finance, uh, rules. Mary alluded to them, but I have not seen them. So I mean, I'm aware of what the statute says, but I'd like to know if we have any internals. If we do like, like this, then those, they need to be added in here. Comparative pricing. So that's, that's not gonna change. Request for proposals. All this stuff has to be like that. Emergency in order to invoke an emergency waiver, the board trustees must see the approved suspension of the policy by majority vote in an advanced purchase. So what kind of messed up when we had the, um, signature cards? They didn't get transferred over. So we got a $250 late fee, which is probably nothing in the scheme of the thousands that are going out, but, um, that probably could have been avoided if we had a vote an emergency provision. I mean, we could have said, look, um, Echo, you can still sign even though you're, but you know, things have, you're, that's not your normal role, but, but you were elected into that role. The board has agreed to pay these bills instead of just, you know, waiting, waiting for things and then not being able to conduct business.
Right.
Um, there was just a bureaucracy at its best. I, uh, no, I wouldn't say that. I, what, I think what would be helpful to know is when we make a change, like an officer change or a bylaw change, does that go into effect as soon as we complete the vote? Or do we have to have the meeting minutes accepted? I, I've heard.
That was the question. Um, that's kind of been the question about the banking. And I, I'm not sure where it says in the bylaws that the minutes have to be approved. Or if that's, or is that a Robert's Rules of Order thing? But I think we, I think we probably need to clarify that policy. And we need to, we need to either clarify the policy or make one that we put in the bylaws that says what the rule is. So we, again, so we, so we know what it is and then we can follow it more easily.
I don't think it's a Robert's Rules thing because you can elect a pro temp, it's effective immediately. And you can also, our bylaws allow us to suspend Robert's rules. In other words, we can have conversation like we're having right now. Um, in a regular meeting, we can say, we're gonna suspend Robert's rules and we're just gonna have a discussion and we don't have to have point of order. We don't have to be recognized. Um, so if that's true, then we should be able to make a motion that's effective immediately. But I think I have to do some homework on that. The, the reason I asked that is because of this emergency provisions. Like what if we need to do something and we need to do it quickly? Like pay a bill or we have to, you know, if the, if the entire board votes on it, um, it should be legal as long as the signature cards are correct at the bank. Um, so I think I'm gonna reach out to Robert on that one.
Okay.
Can you put a note in here? Um, just a, a question to Robert, when, when does, um, a voted motion, uh, you know, uh, when does a vote go into effect or the, the results of, how do you say that? When does a motion after being voted on going to affect immediately or after the minutes are approved?
Where do you want me to put that?
I don't know. Somewhere around emergency provisions. Because, yeah, because I think that's relevant to that.
Add a market to prove it. Okay, here we go.
So you are helping me with the secretarial thing. Let's see how much we got left.
Okay. Oh. There we go. I put it in there.
Okay. And I thought I had marked this one. If you go professional services and utilities, that's, I think all that stuff's good. I did have a concern about this one. Payment of bills.
Oh, payment of bills.
It's, it says the director of finance and business operations may pay bills with electronic payments at their discretion. To the problem with that is.
You'll put a threshold on it?
Yeah, the, there should be a dollar threshold. It's, it should, it should be through an, um, it should be through the appropriate staff person and board member after a valid. Do you see what I'm saying? So like with, with the two signer check, we're gonna have a staff member sign. The director of finance and operations is gonna review it. And then you have two signers. You have a board member and a, and a senior staff member. So with the electronic payment, there's none of that control. I mean, we would catch it on an audit, but we wouldn't be able to prevent.
Money's already gone.
Right.
Should you think, you think it should be a threshold below a certain amount or like for, like for routine bills like the, like say like the electric bill?
Yeah, I, yeah, I get, exactly. And I don't know what form those electronic, are they auto pay? You know, like how you have that on your checking? Is that a credit card payment? I don't, I don't know. It's probably all of the above.
That's probably, that's, yeah, that's, that's a, uh, Mary Miller question, I think.
Yeah, I think so. Can you mark that for a question to Mary? And then all. I know we do have some auto things coming out, like, I know our deposits are automatically made from the, from the county. So there's nobody rushing around with deposit slips for that. After the checks are generated, they're reviewed by the executive director. Checks are required to have two signatures from authorized. That's cool. Okay. To ensure complete transparency of all dollars spent. So one of the things I wanted to, um, is I'm going to take the, um, the bank transactions. And, um, we're gonna, we're gonna post them similar to what they do for the county. So you'll be able to go to a link that takes you to all of the, the deposits incoming and all of the outgoing, um, payments. And people will be able to download, load that file as a CSV and have it as like a searchable format. So if they wanna, if they want to take a look at how the library's, um, utilizing its money, I want that to be completely transparent. Cause we, we've had some sunshine requests on, on what monies were spent. And it would be wonderful if, you know, Tori could just say, here, go here, you can get it for you right here. And you won't have to pay, you won't have to pay for it. It's free. Yeah, consider setting a threshold threshold. And then, um, on the last one where it says to ensure can transparencies. On the last paragraph where it says update July 2020, um, we want to, um, we want to make it, we want to make it, um, a downloadable, uh, format for financial transactions.
Oh.
Yeah, that's gonna be, and by the time we get this thing approved by the board, um, I think Mary Miller will, she'll already have it up on, on the, on the website.
That, that's, uh, the, the monthly bills, that's for the monthly financial statement. That's part of the board package. It's public domain.
It's, yeah, it's part of the packet, but you have to, I don't know if you looked at it. It's not very, uh, user friendly. Like it'll have, they, they'll have the thing and the dollar amount, but you don't know.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, exactly. You don't know exactly what it is. Is it expendable item? Is this a capital approval? Is this a service? What is it? So that, that's kind of, uh, they, one of the requirements in the statute is that we identify expenses by the correct category. And, um, so I'm gonna have to work with Mary on getting all of our expenditures categorized. So. So anyway, I, I'm sure she knows what there are, but they, they should be to where you can, you can just see it and read it.
No, no, there's probably, um, that, in front, the categorization is probably, there's probably a report she can run in the bookkeeping, bookkeeping software that would tell you the categories. Although I, I don't know if the category would be that much more enlightening than the idea that it contains.
She has a report that, um, uh, it's kind of a roll up report by category, but it's not line item.
Okay. Well, the general, probably a general ledger that would have that.
Yeah, she, those are in the, um, those are in the packets, but like say, for example, you want to see, um, what's our utility bill in NEXA? You, you know, you might have a tough time or, or how much? On the cleaners, you know, you, you, what is the cleaning cost or landscape? You know, you, you're not gonna see that unless you know what it is.
Unless you see the invoice or you know what to, how to look for it.
Right. And, and the other thing is like, is that a contract or is it hourly? Is it subcontract? What is it? So that's kind of, I'm, I'm getting a feel for it because I see the checks every month, but I, I don't want the taxpayers and patrons to have to work so hard to figure out what it is. So contract signatures, financial authority agencies, and if you're a new person, for only signature executive director or proxy. Uh, trustees has to find or require. Why is it and or? Shouldn't it be and? Why is it and/or? Shouldn't it be and?
Let's see. Well, either the direct, executive director, uh, or no, hold on. Either the executor, the signature of the executive director and or author others. Authorized officers in the Board of Trustees. Either the executive director or somebody, somebody else designated by the board. Is that how you read that?
I would. I don't know. You, you, I'm sure you know contract law better than me, but it seems to me that. You'd want the administrative staff. The chief administrator to sign and an authorized board member to sign.
People signing checks, that would make sense. Yeah.
Yes, I would get, get rid of the or and just leave it as and.
Okay, so let's.
Yeah, and let's review that and find out why, why wouldn't you want that to be? Uh, let's have that as a permission question.
How do you um? How do you do strike through? You hit the lead?
Uh, you go up to, no, you go up to, you go up to format, you've selected it, go up to format. Up top in the dropdowns.
Uh huh. Oh, format, I got it.
Yeah. And then, and then when you click on format, it'll say text. And then there's a dropdown and you got it already, nevermind.
Then you totally have a, totally have a highlight that, so you don't miss it.
Yeah, there's a highlight pane up on the toolbar next to the A.
Okay, I see it. Okay.
All right. CCL's executive director proxy when needed.
I got rid of the and and I should have been getting rid of the or. So. And I think I just got rid of my, one of my comments and I didn't intend to do that.
Well, I think our next meeting with, with the staff, we can ask her why. Is there a reason why this has to be that way? And then we'll send the. The other questions off to Robert. Let's see the other executive position. Interim director or understudy is activated.
I need to restore my comment though, because I, I inadvertently deleted it. Um.
Okay. I want to figure out where a good place to cut this. We've only got like 15 minutes left. I, I didn't want to go more than two hours.
Okay, okay. I almost said, I think that last panel that I inadvertently deleted. Will there be a?
Yeah.
Okay. There, I put that back. I, I, I. I was doing the Ctrl Z and I did it to. To fix the and/or thing and I deleted that comment, so I'll put it back.
Yep. Uh, temporary proxy when needed. I don't think there's anything. To review there if the executive director position is vacant.
Are you on page thirty-eight succession policy?
I'm on thirty-seven, but we can skip down there because there's really not a lot. That has to be. Establishing and utilizing electronic access to administer pre-authorized purchases. And where to review that. There's, there's already caps on that stuff. They can't go over. Uh, continuity of essential operations. If a majority vote of the board trustees cannot be reached. On the following annual operating duties during the timeline, the staff recommended version one. Of each will go into effect to assure continuity of essential. Yeah, this one scares the heck out of me. Because they're basically saying if we can't get the board to come together. The staff can do whatever they need to do.
True. Annual operating budget, conflict of interest policy resolution and setting the tax levy rate.
So. We almost ran into this last time because. So did you, did you work with the executive director for the budget? Um, cause I came in. I mean, were you consulted a lot on the budget? Cause I, I don't, we didn't.
I recall, we just kind of, it was, it was uh. You know, it was presented to us and we voted on it.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought. So I would love to see. And we'll have to figure out where that is in the policy, but I know it's in our bylaws that we're supposed to coordinate and, and consult. Um. And there must be a way to have continuity of essential operations without. If a majority of the board trustees cannot be reached on the following key.
Can't be reached because we're, we're a five-member board and. I think it's unlikely. I mean, I guess it could happen, but I think it's pretty unlikely.
Yeah, you'd have to have, you'd have to have three of us out, out of five.
Or you have to have a. You'd have to have a tie.
Yeah, I think that's a question. Has that ever happened? Is, is there any likelihood of that happening?
Um. I don't know that it's, I don't know. It hasn't happened since I've been on the board, but that's only since, it's been less than two years. So I don't know if it's ever happened or not.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I think that like, like number three, that's not. We, we see that coming long before it happens. That's not, I, I don't know why that would be. Continuity of essential operations.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't uh. I'd be curious to go back to the uh, minutes of that meeting and see what the discussion was, what, you know, why that got adult in the first place.
Yeah. I. Well, the only thing that made me feel comfortable about that, it was that um. Budgets can be, can be amended. They can be modified. Some of the, some of these things cannot be amended or modified, like the tax levy, that's pretty much, once that goes. That, that's it. I would say the adoption of the library's conflict of interest policy resolution. That has to happen by statute, I believe. So I'm okay with number two. I think number one and three, we need to talk about why.
Okay.
And you know, and I would say. Why are we waiting till November? Cause I remember when this came up, it's like, we didn't have a lot of time to look it over. And it was like, if you don't approve it now, we're not going to be able to make payroll in December and January. And I was like, what?
Yeah, so we probably need to be doing that a lot. We need to be doing that, approving the coming budget sooner than that.
I would do it in October. That's when, like. Most of the major companies I've worked for, their fiscal year was the calendar year and the budget was pretty much firmed up in October. Because, because all these program directors, they have to make their, you know, their, their planning is based on their budget. So if, if they don't have their budget by November. It has to be approved in October. I, I would slide that back a year and, and let's hear why, why we would wait so long.
Okay, so.
I mean, and, and the other good thing is. It would never go three months where we couldn't get at least three people in a quorum. I mean. If that happens, we got bigger problems.
So good, um. Okay.
All right, and the only, so I put this in here is this green sentence under the succession policy.
Uh huh.
I just feel like we're in such a pickle right now um. With Renee gone and then. Um, Tori went on vacation and there is no understudy, so. What I would say. It, it feels like the board is out of the whole approval process for executive director. When. When the executive director um, resigns. So I, so I put this in here for that purpose.
That was, okay, that's language that you, that you've added.
You're right, green means add.
Okay, I got you.
Now let's see if Tori's got a problem. I don't think she'll have a problem with it. I mean, it's just, we, I just want to know who, who are you picking before you spend all your time training them and. Because that person, whoever she picks is going to report to us. So I'd like to know we've got a good one there. Let's see, in the event, incapacitating. Okay, so all that stuff. I think this is a good place to quit, Diana, if you're all right.
No, I think that, or this new little meet cut us off after a certain amount of time.
Well, it's, it's almost two hours now, so I think. Uh, and there's, I think we're, we actually made pretty good progress here. And some of the stuff we really.
Well, and then we're, the, the board of trustees bylaws, that, that, that is going to be. That can be a long discussion in and of itself, so.
Yeah, well, the, so we made it.
I don't think we want to try to cram that into the next ten minutes.
No, no, no. I wouldn't touch it. I mean, we're, where are we at? We're at on uh. We're on page thirty-eight and the policies go to page forty-two, I believe. So we only got four, we only got like, you know. A few more pages left on that one.
Okay.
And then, and we can take that on when, when Tori's back.
Okay, and then should we, I guess we need to wait until she's back to set up our next meeting?
Yeah, I think, um, so I've got action items, um, Robert's rules, um. The downlink, we've got action item for Robert to review. I can't remember if you had any homework to do. Maybe just take a look at the um, resources, those files that I put in the um. That gives you the background on some of this stuff. Um, just maybe take a, a legal perspective on that, so that when we go through these um. We can make sure that we're not. We're not putting something out there that isn't sound.
Okay.
Anyway, well, that's all I got. We're not voting on anything, so. I appreciate your patience and anybody who logged in to call and listen. I'm grateful for your, for your interest in the library and going through these things.
Yep.
Everybody have a, a, a good night.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yep.